I'd like to call the December 16, 2014 meeting of the Planning Board to order. The Board will be considering tonight's agenda in the following order. Approval of the minutes from the November 18 Planning Board meeting, followed by the Ramshead Boardwalk Resource Protection Permit, then the Planning Board Rules of Procedure Amendments, Land Use Amendment Status Report, then Public Comment on Items Not on Tonight's Agenda, followed by Adjournment. I just want to also mention that there was an item on the agenda for tonight. It was the 1,200 Shore Road Private Access Way, and it has been removed due to incompleteness. So the first item was Approval of the Minutes. Anyone have any comments, questions on the minutes? No? Then would anyone like to make a motion on the minutes?
I will.
Thank you, Pete.
Move to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Peter. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. That was unanimous. All right. Next item on the agenda, the Ramshead Boardwalk Resource Protection Permit. Ramshead Partners is requesting a resource protection permit to construct a 2,046 linear foot, which is 6,138 square feet, of a three-foot wide elevated wooden boardwalk, including a 34 linear foot, which is 102 square feet, aluminum bridge, in an area of RP1 wetland and sand dune located at 20 Ramshead Road. A public hearing has been scheduled for this evening, and the application will be reviewed for compliance with Section 19-8-3 Resource Protection Regulations. This item will be addressed in the following format. The Town Planner will provide an overview of the item, after which the applicant will summarize the project. The public is welcome, as part of the public hearing, to comment on this project, after which the Board may begin discussions. Then we will conclude with a motion for the Board to consider. Maureen, Nova, please.
Sure. Just to remind the Board that this project is in a smorgasbord of resource protection, sand dune, RP1 wetland area, a portion of it's also in the 100-year floodplain, so it has already received a long list of permits from the state, and you have a record of those. The Planning Board's focus is purely for a resource protection permit because of its location, and the only recommendation you're getting from staff, I believe, is that at some point before construction, there will need to be a flood permit. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to the Board.
Yeah, okay, sure. Yes, all right. Stephen, would you like to provide us with a summary for -- let me know how long -- you've had an injury, it appears, so let me know how long you are able to stand at the podium if you need to sit.
It will be brief. Thank you, Maureen. Good evening. Stephen Moore here on behalf of Ramshead Partners. Yes, please. I think between the packets, between our site walk and all the information we've been through, everyone has a pretty good understanding of this project. 2,000, a little more than 2,000 linear feet of boardwalk and the 34-foot bridge. We do have the DEP and Army Corps permits for the nine square feet of wetland impact. We do have the DEP permit for sand dunes, for construction in a natural resource habitat, and for the wetland and the sand dune permits. So we have those in place. You have the Department of Conservation comments wherein they didn't identify any deficiencies or issues with this. Steve Harding through AMAC has reviewed the package and found that it conforms with his notes. The revised plan that we submitted to you included the three critical things, which were an indication of the timing of activities, which have to happen between September and April, the need for all that work to occur without mechanical equipment in that resource, and then the identification of the station breaks where Phase 1 and Phase 2 met. So we've included those as notes on the plan that came into you in early December. What we've done is gone through, mapped this out, identified all the issues. We're back before you tonight because we need this final permit from you. With that in hand, we will go see the Code Enforcement Officer to secure the flood permit because our structure sits within that flood hazard zone. We've designed it so it complies with the, on the drawing board, flood hazard zone from FEMA not yet adapted. So we think we're in good shape to move forward. We look to this Board for any final guidance or comments, and I really think that's it. We've been thoughtful and careful, and I'll turn it over to the Board now for comment. In closing, we did, the whole team looked at that question about that bridge and the flexibility that we talked about in the field during the site walk of moving it. And our final conclusion amongst the design team, which included us as the designers, the structural engineers, Albert Frick as our soil scientist, was that in the event that that, in the event that we have soil loss around that bridge, based on our projections, that soil loss is going to be substantial enough that the reach back on the boardwalk redirection, in other words, if we have to move the bridge, we're going to be reaching back a significant distance away from that bridge, and there's no way we could accurately project that. We weren't comfortable asking for that sort of large gray area with this board. So we simply are holding with that bridge. We have, I hate to say this, every reasonable comfort that that's going to stay where it is, but we just, we appreciate that, but we just couldn't see where we'd stop with that realignment. So we didn't include that in this package. Instead, figuring that if it comes apart, we'll be back, and we'll talk about that with you again. So with that, I'll turn it back to the Board.
I do have one question for you, Stephen. When I was reading the package, when you talk about the 2,046 linear feet of boardwalk, you're also including the bridge. So when you say "boardwalk,"
It's all, that's right. 2,046 is the total length, end to end, including, yes, exactly.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, it's not "and" an additional
It is not.
... boardwalk. It's all
Correct.
Okay. That was my only question. Anyone have, yes, Henry.
First of all, the comment about the walk, it was very informative, but I have one question, which I
Will you use your microphone?
Sorry. I have a question, which I don't know whether it's covered by this or not. I note it's three-foot wide and elevated, and it runs through a lot of grass area, or what was described as grass. And I also saw a lot of deer markings where they've been walking up and down. It wondered, crossed my mind that it was a pretty long path, and that I don't think deer can leap three feet and three foot in the air. So that means that the rest of the marshland is cut off from the existing deer unless they've got enough sense to go around the end and come back again. So I know it sounds, but that's a wildlife protection
We've actually looked at this.
Oh, you have?
We did consider this, and we came back with two thoughts. We do a fair amount of work trying to protect habitat from deer, and what we found is that deer can leap up to a four-foot horizontal distance, as long as the height is less than four feet. That's sort of option one. So our sense was, they probably can clear this. The deer would normally be able to clear that because it's three, and it's less than three feet wide. But with that said, because of the deer paths in here, if you notice that, we sort of traversed a good portion of that boardwalk traverses the horizontal deer path. We suspect the deer are just going to learn and move one side or the other. They're either going to migrate on one side or the other.
Because I wondered if you wouldn't put a section of it a little bit lower, like go down to one foot or one foot six, so that they could, they could go over it in one or two places without
We can't under the sand dune regulations. The sand dune regulations from the Maine Department of Urban Protection are what require the 36-inch elevation to preserve flow and preserve the grass cover under. So I suspect, we talked through this with the natural resource people up in Gray. We suspect that if they're in flight, the deer will actually just leap over it.
Yeah.
If they're just moving through and grazing, they're going to follow that. We suspect they're just going to follow that alignment. That's what our, that's what we're projecting. So we don't see that as a cutoff. We see that as they're going to move through that in a way that they would do adapting to any other obstacle.
All right. Thank you.
Does anyone have a question specifically for Stephen before I allow him to sit down, which, okay.
Two minor questions, Steve. One, I noticed you, your plans call for an observation deck. It looks like a three-foot bump out.
Correct.
And try as I might, couldn't find it on the plan. Is it located, or are you planning to put that through after you've got the thing in?
After we get it in, we're going to locate it, but it's suggested in the plans, it indicates that it's in that, it's on that loop, right in there. I'm pretty good on that lateral motion.
And the bridge decking is aluminum, not cedar, or is this because
That's correct.
The bridge comes with a ton of decking?
The bridge decking is cedar.
Well, I must have missed the other part.
I believe the plans call it as aluminum, but we were concerned about reflectivity sitting out there in the marsh, so I, the last set of drawings that I redlined, I changed that aluminum, it's still an aluminum bridge, but the decking is cedar.
Okay. The one I looked at, I thought I saw that it was aluminum decking.
That's a good point, Peter. I don't, I'm positive that it's a cedar decking for lessened reflectivity.
Anyone else have any other questions or comments, just for Stephen, before I let him sit down?
Steve, we talked a lot about the location of the anchors for the bridge and how many feet back they would be from the edge, and I was trying to find that designated on the plan, and is, are the hash marks here, are those indications of distance?
What we have on that one drawing of the aluminum bridge is we've shown the helical anchors, and then we've just called out a dimension to the top of bank.
I kept reading through it, trying to make sure I could see it.
It's just on that one
On the bridge cross-section? That's okay.
We don't, we don't actually specify that distance back from the top of bank on the drawings.
I don't know about anyone. I would suggest that that should be on the plan, even if it's in a note, how many feet back it says, but I'll look to the rest of the Board to see if they agree or disagree. Maureen, any comment from you on the plan?
If members want it specifically done a certain way, then absolutely you should make it a condition on the approval.
Okay. Carol, you might have this in mind, maybe you could help make the
Well, I just wonder, I mean, if no one else sees it as an issue, then I
Are you worried about the distance from the
That it's from the edge, where they're setting the anchors from the edge of that
Because the bridge is 34 feet long. Those anchors can't be too far in from the edge of the bridge, and you're going to want to kind of have equal amounts of distance back from the bank on both sides. You're not going to shove it all the way to one side.
Right. I have no issue whatsoever adding a note on that detailed drawing, 3 of 3. It simply says that the closest point of the helical anchor shall be no closer than four feet from the existing top of bank, because that's our prescribed minimum on the south side.
No, you were very specific that you knew where you wanted to place
We do, because we've investigated that pretty thoroughly.
And as I recall, it was going to be farther on one side than the other
And that is
Because projected more movement on one
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, then.
Thank you.
Now, this is a public hearing, and there is nobody here besides ourselves, so, right, so I'm officially opening it. There's no one here, and now we're going to officially close it. All right. Does the Board have any other discussion? I will point out, AMAC is fine with the plans. The Conservation Commission had a site walk, and they voted six to nothing to recommend the resource protection permit. I didn't have any other comments or questions.
Were they lucky enough to have as nice a day as we were?
They didn't have a site walk.
Oh, they didn't.
But I showed them pictures of your wonderful site walks.
Okay, thank you. I would like to thank Steve for arranging such beautiful weather for our site
That was a lovely walk. Does anyone have any comments or questions? No? Then at this time, would anyone like to make a motion? Thank you, Elaine.
Let's hope the Board will consider finding some facts. Ramshead Partners is requesting a resource protection permit to construct 2,046 linear feet, 6,138 square feet of boardwalk, in an area of RP1 wetland and sand dune located at 20 Ramshead Road, which requires reviewing of Section 19-8-3 Resource Protection Regulations. Two, the boardwalk will be located in the 100-year floodplain. Three, the application substantially complies with Section 19-8-3 Resource Protection Permit Regulations. Therefore be it ordered, based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Ramshead Partners for a resource protection permit to construct 2,046 linear feet, 6,138 square feet of boardwalk, in an area of RP1 wetland and sand dune located at 20 Ramshead Road be approved, subject to the following conditions. One, the bridge shown on the plans, the notes regarding the bridge shown on the plan shall be amended to provide that the bridge deck planking shall be cedar, and that the anchors for the bridge shall be installed not closer than four feet from the existing top of bank. Hang on, I'll get my phone back on here. Two, that the applicant obtain a floodplain permit from the Code Enforcement Officer.
Second. Thank you, Carol Anne. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, is that cedar preserved and treated?
No.
Anyone else, any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor? That is unanimous. The motion is passed. Thank you.
It's a good job we went before your foot, boy.
The Planning Board is proposing amendments to the rules and regulations to address three areas. The amendments concern procedural votes at workshops, site walk procedures, and research by Planning Board members. We'll be looking at this one in the following format. Maureen, if you don't mind providing an overview of those three items, and then a public hearing is not required for revisions to the Planning Board Rules and Regulations. However, the public is welcome to come to the podium and comment on proposed revisions. At the close of public comment, the Board will be discussing the amendments, concluding with a motion for the Board to consider. Maureen, do you have
Sure. So this is just trying to pull together a few things that have accumulated over time and addressing another item. Several months ago, the Board did come up with a, I think it was over a year ago now, rules of how you want to conduct the site walk. Those rules have been incorporated into these minutes, excuse me, into these rules and regulations. There was a recommendation from the Council a few months ago that the Planning Board consider amendments to their regulations similar to what the Council has done, in that they now explicitly allow a procedural vote at a workshop. And the procedural vote can be either to make determination about a Board member's conflict of interest and ability to participate in an item, or a decision to schedule an item for a workshop at the following regular meeting. In practice, the Board has already been doing these things at workshops, just haven't been taking a vote on them until a regular meeting. So procedurally, you can now take the vote. I don't think it really makes a big difference overall. And then the last one is an item that came up just a few months ago about Internet research. This is an item where it's just come up in one instance, where the decision was that the Planning Board could do its own independent research. However, any research needs to be sent to the Planner, and the Planner's responsibility would be to collect that research, to make sure all Board members get a copy of it, to make sure the applicant in any instance has a copy of it, and also to make sure the public file includes all of that information. Any research done after the Planning Board package goes out would be distributed to all Board members and to the applicant as soon as it's received. This has been reviewed by our town attorney. He, let's see, how do I put this? This is not the most conservative way of doing it. However, he feels that it is still a reasonable approach that preserves people's due process rights. So he has seen your language, and I have given you just two brief comments on that. So unless there's any questions, I'm going to stop now.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would open it once again to the public. Again, there's no one here. So bringing it back to the Board, there are three items that we're looking at. I'm not sure how many comments and questions you have, but let's just take the first one. The first one is called procedural votes at workshops. Anyone have any comments or questions? I saw Liza first, and then I'll go with Peter.
Yeah, I was looking at the language. I didn't think it explicitly talked about the ability to take a procedural vote. I mean, it mentioned it almost as an aside, when saying, minutes of the workshop are not required except when a procedural vote is taken, and that language is sort of predicated to say no vote or decision shall be made. I was just wondering if we should think about, defer to the attorneys explicitly saying that procedural votes are allowed.
It's each five.
Yes.
Are you a
Your referee? Yes.
It's underlined in red.
Except for a procedural vote on a potential conflict of interest or bias of a member, or to schedule a public hearing. So I, it seemed like it was sort of narrowing the field of procedural votes to only those matters.
My very seat, ma'am.
Okay. To only take procedural vote on those matters.
Correct.
Not say, okay, great.
Anyone have any comment at least to that suggestion? And then, Peter, I did recognize
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, so everyone, they'll sit on that. Peter.
This, I think it's a clarification only. It says minutes of the workshop are not required except when a procedural vote is taken. As it reads, I took it to mean you had to have minutes for the entire meeting, which I'm not sure we intended. What if we just said minutes are not required except that minutes reflecting a procedural vote shall be taken? So the minutes would be simply the state, as the words of the vote, without any of the details of the workshop, whatever those other activities might have been. But I don't know what you intended by your language. I mean, I'm just throwing that out as an idea.
Minutes are really an interesting topic, and we're getting more and more and more discussion. I can tell you that usually what I hear from people is that the Planning Board minutes are much too detailed. Now we're starting to hear not about Planning Board, but about other boards that maybe they're not detailed enough. When I drafted this, it was my expectation, one, that I would have to do the minutes, and two, that the length of detail would not be even, that the portion of the workshop that was the typical stuff you do would be nothing more than a headline that said, discuss this, discuss this, discuss that, and that the detail that we typically see would only be for the portion of the workshop where there was a vote. But if you want to go and explicitly talk about that, you can. I, you know, I'm continually getting advice that really legally, all minutes have to do is record votes. So we're already way, way over what legally required to do minutes.
Yeah, I'm a minutes minimalist myself, and if the practice will be as you describe it, I will throw my comment, that would be fine.
Carol Anne, sorry.
I was just going to, based on what you just said, Maureen, is it your intent to start? I know you take down information as the, for brief, for instructions to yourself, but are you going to start doing minutes for each meeting and outlining the topics that are discussed, or
Only if absolutely forced to do so. I can tell you, under the right-to-know law, the notes that I'm taking now, it's all public record.
That's all public record.
And I have, on occasion, had people ask me what happened at the workshop, and I've said, you're welcome to look at my notes, and I've actually scanned the handwritten notes and sent them to people. They've looked at them in the office, so unless the Board really wants to go down that road, I would not be doing it. When I was first hired more than two decades ago, the town actually paid for a secretary to take notes at workshops, and that was cut in a budget-saving measure. So, you know, I'm now going to the, whatever I take as notes is what we have. I think you need to, I think we need to upper game a little if you're taking a vote.
Yes, I agree there.
I saw Elaine, I saw Henry.
I think Peter makes a good point, just so it's clear that we can do a briefing, and I would suggest we just say, minutes of the workshop are not required except to record any procedural vote.
Okay, I wrote that down. And I know you had a question, and then I want to go back and ask the Board about that change in language. Go ahead.
No. It struck me that as we are on recording, wouldn't it be just as good to have a voice recorder and press the button when we want to do that, and pull the button off, and then it's available if anybody wants to listen to it, and nobody has to write it down?
You remember Richard Nixon?
Sorry, what? Sorry, what did you say?
You remember Richard Nixon?
Oh, I see what you mean, yeah. Yes, precisely, yeah.
Yes, I appreciate the sentiment of making, of ease, of effort, but having had to transcribe a regular tape recorder, it's actually very difficult to hear what people say unless they're sitting in front of microphones like this.
But do you have to transcribe it? I mean, all it is is necessary public record, which we could put onto the web if somebody needed to look at it.
Yeah, the purpose of the town, I mean, the town still feels very strongly that there should be minutes that can be posted on the website. So we really haven't gone to the point where we've completely abandoned a written record.
With all due respect, voice carries quite well. With all due respect, voice carries quite well over the Internet, and it's not very difficult to put the recording on the Internet. In fact, if you want to see it, you can actually have the frequencies displayed on the screen.
And with respect, when the Council decides that that's how they want us to keep records for the public, that'd be happy.
Well, I'm only suggesting it at a workshop, not at the regular meeting, of course. Just at the workshop, if you take a vote, then it would be a small, a very small sound snippet, and it wouldn't particularly involve anything complicated.
I appreciate that sentiment. I think with the change in language that Elaine is offering, it does seem that we can have a very minimal, as Peter is also supporting, minimal details at these workshops, except when we get to the procedural vote. Then that should be recorded in more detail. How do people feel about Elaine's change to, workshops are not required except to record any procedural vote when taken, or something along those lines?
Important, yes.
Yeah. Important.
Okay, so we are, so the intent is there, we get the language now to, just to clarify that intent. But everyone's all set on number one then? Okay, I'm going to move on to, the second one was site walk procedures. This would be in Section 3, Conduct of Meeting, subsection D, Site Walks. Anyone have any comments, questions about the proposed change to site walks? I am not seeing anything. Or anyone have any questions? So number three is research. This will also be in Section 6, 6 Procedures, subsection C, Research. Anyone have any comments or questions about, yes, Peter?
I had one suggestion, clarification, and it's not anything more, because I know Maureen has spent a lot of time on this, and our town council has reviewed it as well, so I really think this is a clarification. I want to make sure we understand exactly what the output will be for this independent research, and right now it says, the research shall be made available to the Planning Board, the public, and the applicant. It doesn't say exactly what it is that's made available, and you could say, well, it's just a reference to it, or a synopsis of the research, or, you know, you have to print it out in full. And so what I was going to suggest is that we say in the second line after the words "plan" "planning board," "Information sufficient to identify and locate the research shall be made available." So it would be definitely a website reference, if that's what it is, or the, an article in a magazine, what have you. But so it's not implied here that we have to do a synopsis of what the research said. I know in the Rudy's case, the thing that Maureen circulated, you actually did, in several cases, have a little blurb about what was discussed, and that's fine if you want to create it, but I, I'm not sure we ought to require that, because we want to let people find the thing, and then read it and draw their own conclusions. So I thought that would, I thought that was in the spirit of what we're talking about. I'm not sure that this is a board agrees.
Yes.
Would you repeat your words again?
Yeah, "Information sufficient to identify and locate the research shall be made available."
Sounds good. Rest of the board?
Sounds good.
It looks okay.
Well, with that, I want to talk this a little bit, so say somebody-
Liza, can you use your microphone?
Oh, sure. Say somebody found an article in a journal that's not online. Would they, you know, cite the volume and, you know, of the journal, but not supply the actual text? And then, I mean, it just seems like maybe the text of the research should be provided. Because it could be, if something's not available online, it might be difficult for everybody else to access, including the applicant, is my thought.
That's some deep research you're doing, if you're actually going to the library or someplace that's not internet-based. But I would imagine, in the spirit of making sure that everyone has access to what is being seen by a board member, that in that case, where somebody would have to, I'm trying to think what other, either you would have a reference book in your own private libraries type, or you'd go to a library, I'm just trying to think, what document would you have access to that others wouldn't, that you would, you would to make sure everyone could read it, you would have to make a copy of it?
Could be a fifth.
Careful.
I think Peter's suggestion covers the spirit of that, in that if you were reading an article that was not available online, you could scan it and send it electronically to the planner, and the planner could then distribute it. And, I mean, because you don't know, you might be flipping through a magazine that's not online, though that's hard to find, or that you have to pay to read online. And so you've, and scanning and providing it electronically, I think, because it's saying, "Information sufficient to identify and locate," and so you're helping somebody locate it by scanning a document and providing it electronically. So I think that that covers it.
Yes, Maureen.
I see your point, and I think what we tried to do here is, the next sentence says, "Research conducted shall be provided to the town planner in a form of digital or paper copy, internet address, or other appropriate method." So I do think that, you know, if it was something obscure, exotic, hopefully, staff would say, "Look, I think we need to actually, can you give me a copy? I can make it available." So I think we have to rely on the spirit of this.
I think you're right. It's totally in there. I was reacting to the comment, like, "Oh, no," but it's totally covered.
So you mean, travel to the Hawaiian Islands or out of reach to do the research?
I think if you're going to the Hawaiian Islands to do research, you need to send me two.
But I think that is the spirit. We do want all information to be seen, and not just, "I read something," and then not allow others to read it also. Any other comments about this section? Okay, so Peter's change in language, are we agreeing to include that? I'm seeing some heads. Okay. All right, then, those are the three sections to go through. Anything else, though, that we haven't touched on?
Yeah, I have a question. So what I've done much more than research is to send Maureen a question that I would like the applicant to answer. And I don't know if we need a formal way to do that, or if the way we've been doing it works pretty well. But, I mean, I don't really consider that research. I just consider that giving the applicant a heads up.
I understand that there were objections made to that. I have yet to find one thing that was inappropriate about that. And I'm more than happy to continue with the same approach. We have had the planning board member is not communicating with other board members. You're going directly through me. I'm providing a question to the applicant. To be frank, I do that, I do that often. Well, I will get feedback from whomever, and will contact an applicant and say, "Look, I think you're going to get a question about this. You should be prepared, have information." I've never had anyone be upset about it. They always like the heads up. So I think continuing in that manner is fine.
I agree. I think the questions are great. We want questions, and as long as we all hear the answer at the same time and receive that answer. So any other comments about? No. Okay, then, then we'll go ahead, and who does that go now, to the council?
And here's our motion.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Which you, I would suggest, when you, if someone read the motion, they may want to say, "As amended."
Do I have? Yes, Liza.
Right, motion for the board to consider, "We order that the 2014 Planning Board Rules and Regulations Amendments, as amended, be recommended to the town council for consideration."
We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Carol Ann. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Okay, we'll go on to the council. All right. We have one last item on the agenda, and this is our land use amendment status report. The planning board will provide to the town council a status report on the land use amendment package. Maureen, do you want to summarize that one, too?
Sure. You know, we're almost there, and it's really exciting. We have a package of amendments. We're missing two pieces. One is our comments from our town attorney, and he told me he'd have those to me by the end of the week. The other is the recommendations or the report from our consultant, and I've spoken to him, and he's got most of that done, and I fully expect that to be ready for your January workshop. So we're very close. The last time you sent something to the council, you made it, you committed to a deadline of getting it done by the end of this month, or providing a status report. So what I'm asking you to do is just to approve forwarding this status report to the town council.
Thank you. Anyone on the board have any comments about the status report? No, then you take a formal vote on that, or? Yeah, okay. Someone make a motion to send this to the council? Carol Ann, thank you.
Make a motion that we send this memorandum regarding land use amendment status report to the town council.
Second?
Second.
Joe, thank you. A discussion, all those in favor, and that is unanimous. Okay. Normally, we would take a public comment on anything not on tonight's agenda. Once again, there is no one here. And now, the last item is adjournment. Would anyone like to make a motion for adjournment?
Can I have a question beforehand?
Oh, I'm sorry, Henry.
It's just-
Henry, you got to use your microphone. I'm sorry.
Sorry. I apologize, ladies and gentlemen. Just quickly, I notice on all of the recommendations, it's the facts provided, and what happens when a fact is incorrect that's been provided? It seems that once or twice, something has been said that's not actually factual. It's what the applicant believes to be factual, I'm sure, but in actual fact is not. So I don't know where we proceed from there. If somebody sitting here has some other knowledge predetermined, or what? You know, their minds predetermined? I mean, I'll give you an example. I think I brought it up last time. Some of these pressure-treated timbers are, in actual fact, not environmentally friendly. They're not terribly good for the environment. They're not disastrous, but they're not, they're not completely neutral. Yet if you ask some people who I'm sure mean very, very well about it, they will turn around and say, "Oh, it's environmentally friendly." Now, that's not factual. So how do you go about that? Because we don't seem to have a recourse over-
Well, I have two comments, and then I'm going to throw it to you, Maureen. My two comments are, first of all, these are the type of questions that we were talking about beforehand, that certainly should be brought up to someone, such as, in that case, that example, I'm thinking our town engineer. You possibly could ask a question. I'm not sure if town engineer will know or not, but those are the type of questions. Certainly bring those up beforehand, so someone can answer them. And then my second comment, and I'll bring it back to you, Henry, is that when we do have a question, and the applicant has a different point of view, we are able to bring in a third party. There is always that opportunity for us to bring in our own experts.
But the problem with that is, it's when it's given. You know, if you, if it's an ad hoc, I mean, even this type of meeting, somebody comes up and applies for something, it's the end of a workshop. It's not occurred to us before, because in theory, we haven't made up our minds, or we've thought about it, but we didn't think about that particular question. You ask the question, just like I asked about the deer jumping over the fence. I mean, I'm sure they are capable of doing it, but I don't know that they're capable of jumping four feet and four foot up. Now, I take the applicant's word that that's the case, but what happens now if I, if, just theoretically, find that no, on average, deer can only leap two feet? So you have, the facts given, you have to take. That's the bit that I find difficult, you know, and I think somebody brought that up before at one stage, about, they would see the facts presented, and it's not necessarily factual. The same as the internet is not necessarily factual. It's written, a lot of things on the internet are incorrect. So that's my question. And I think there should be some form of repercussion. I don't mean punishment. I mean, some sort of way of going backtracking some of these things and deciding that they were or were not incorrectly stated.
Maureen? Well, once you grant an approval, you don't get a do-over. So if someone, let's use the deer example. You asked a question, the answer was, deer are going to be okay. What you can do as a board member, first of all, in the packet, there was a lot of information provided by the applicant from the state. The state did a heavy-duty job, in my opinion, of looking at wildlife habitat impact and granted a permit. So that kind of lends credence to the answer that the applicant provided.
Right.
Further, the applicant said, "We've done this in other places. This is our experience." That's a second piece of information. So there's starting to be not just what the applicant said, but some other facts that are in evidence, that tend to support what the applicant said. But let's say you didn't buy that, and you still question whether that's accurate. There's a couple of things you can do. You can say, "I want more information. I want to table this application, and I want the applicant to provide more information." You need to convince three of your fellow board members of, that that's important. And if you can't, you lose, and you have to just live with what you have. If you can convince three of your board members, then you table the application. You say, "Applicant, wildlife habitat impacts are a key standard of review under the resource protection permit standards," and you need to make sure you're asking for something that's actually related to the standards of review. That always is a good thing. And you can say, "You need to come back and bring me information that says that this is not going to be a problem," but you need to be willing to delay the project. But once, once you're ready to approve it, then you either need to let it go, or maybe you can even get three of your fellow board members to support some kind of condition. And, you know, you can come up with something that the applicant provide a letter from the Department of Conservation, that they feel confident this is not going to impact the movement of deer. Or the condition has to be very specific, has to be something that staff doesn't have to use a lot of interpretation on, because you can't delegate your authority to staff. That would be illegal. You can have staff implement a decision you've already made, like you have to get this letter. So that's another option. Or you just let it go. So, yes, facts will be brought in evidence all the time, and some of them you'll question, some of them you will let go. The reason that motion says, "Based on the facts and the materials submitted," is it always seemed to me unfortunate that, in addition to the information that the applicant submits, there's a great deal of work that the planning board does at the meeting. You ask a lot of questions. You really think about it. You discuss it. You massage the information. And it always seemed unfortunate to me that you weren't able to capture some of that effort in the work, in the motion for approval. So that's why it says, "Based on the facts and materials submitted." I want to be clear that if there's one comment made during the meeting, and that was something that you really wanted to be part of the approval, you need to make it a condition of approval. You can't just rely on stray comments being made during the meeting, that someone promised that they weren't going to cut down that tree, but there's nothing that's on the plan, and there's no note on the approval, and the tree comes down. Well, you're out of luck. But I do want to point out that the most recent issue you've looked at, the Rudy's application, the fact that the applicant made an extensive presentation about an anodized aluminum was a key, a key reason that the code officer was willing to consider this being an amendment. And he said, "It's not a condition on the approval." And I said, "If it's based on the facts and the materials submitted." And there was a ton of facts that were presented at the meeting that we didn't get in paper, but it was really the basis for the board's decision. So I think that phrase in the motion, even recently, has been very important. But yeah, this is your job as a board member. You've going to have to sort through the facts, and you're going to be told things that aren't true, either by mistake or deliberately. But once you make a vote for approval, you don't get a do-over.
Okay.
Who said, Henry? Okay. Then it is, I'm looking for a motion for adjournment, unless anyone has any other comments? Henry?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you, and all those in favor? And we are adjourned.